Yeah.
Perfect. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today we're going to have a meeting called our Foot Legions or Homeless Science. The purpose of the meeting today is to, for the school board, to gather information regarding a proposed building project for baseball, softball, soccer, multipurpose type use. Board members that are present, I've asked you to do a roll call, but I can name them, in person, we have Chris Nipple, Gil Smith, and myself. Online, we have Mike Priest, Neil Anderson, Kurt Swartskoff. And who's that? We're missing Tim Strasser at this time. All board members are present except for Tim Strasser.
Who's Mike? It might be Mike Burns, Burns Building.
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, thank you.
And Keith Pierce with Office, and he provided some figures which he had all.
Keith, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Did you keep the mic connected? Our internment is down in the city of Delphi, so we're running on hotspots. So if we have some technical glitches, please bear with us today. At this time, I guess I will open this up to Mr. Sims or Mr. Long, to give us a brief overview of the project, and then we will open it up for further questions. Obviously, this is a work session, so there will be no public input today. Do you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Kevin, are you there?
Yes, there I am.
And Neil's here, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'll just give a little intro. We were approached by Neil, as you all know, with this suggestion of putting together a building that could be utilized outside for baseball and softball, that would also in turn open up gym space, valuable gym space, for our basketball programs during the winter, and would get baseball, softball out of the back gym. So it was really a win-win for all the programs at Delphi by creating more space. So we certainly appreciate him coming forward with the sizable donation to help move forward. He has presented, I believe, with a lot of numbers and some dimensions that we started with when we were considering his input only, basically. So the building we started with was going to be small, and they were trying to do it all through his donation, along with the fact that we would maybe have to raise a little bit of money. So that was the initial thought process on the size of the building, the height of the roof, all those dimensions that we started with. So we're here, obviously, to discuss that, moving forward, and what may, can, or cannot be done. And so I just think it's a win-win, not only for a baseball, softball program, but for Delphi Community School Corporation as a whole, you know, adding a building, adding facility, and creating space for our athletes. Caitlin, would you have anything you'd like to add?
Not really, I think Ryan covered pretty much all of it. However, I do see it being very beneficial, especially during the winter. The gym space is very, very limited, and I know that puts a lot of stress on Kevin, as well as all the other coaches, to work around that. But I think it could benefit us in the long run, help us build our program, and with having Spencer Jenner's donation at our hands, I think it's pretty awesome.
Mr. Sims?
Yeah, I mean, I would just reiterate the same thing that two coaches said, you know, and we all know that we have limited space, and that there's a lot of stress put on during, in particular, you start looking at December through end of February, it gets really difficult gym-wise, because we've got middle school girls' basketball, which is getting started, we've still got middle school boys' basketball, which isn't complete yet, those two sports kind of overlap, and that doesn't even, it really doesn't even take into account the fact that we still have cheerleading, we still have, you know, our pom team, our dance team. So, you know, all the space, as all of you know, is extremely difficult to manage and make things happen. So this is awesome, from my point of view, it's awesome that we can really alleviate some of the pain and give really quality space for, you know, at least two programs, maybe more, to find a place to go own their skills during bad weather.
One quick question I got before we move on to the final question. Would this eliminate us having to lease the old middle school gym from the church in town?
Well, I wished it would, Steve, but I don't think it will, and I say that just because there's still an overlap between middle school girls' and middle school boys' basketball. Our conference has really kind of taken that on, trying to figure out a time where we could actually have a more normal schedule, but hardly any of our high schools in the conference are in a situation where they have enough space to be able to do that. That's the reason the two schedules are kind of separated. You know, our boys really play their middle school basketball prior to the girls' program, starting their school program. So I don't know that it's going to totally alleviate it, just because of opponent's schedules, but it definitely is going to make it much, much better when we have sixth grade boys' basketball and sixth grade girls' basketball, with the ability to use the oxygen the entire time, so that would be.
Caitlin, can I ask Kevin a quick question here? Kevin, what are teens' sports activities seen using this facility? Are we talking about golf, putting a net up in there and working, or what else do you envision being used this building for?
Well, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, and I don't know what the finished facility's going to look like, but yes, that definitely would be something that the golf program could do really easily. I mean, we've already got the equipment to set up and down for the girls' golf, boys' golf, to be able to hit into nets with a simulator, which, you know, they are always looking for spaces to do that, that's definitely a possibility. And then, obviously, I don't know, baseball and softball, for sure, and I don't know, because I don't really know what we're going to end up with a facility, but I think I can put it to use other ways, too. I mean, if it's got the big garage doors on it on the sides, I could see us putting together fundraisers and having fish dinners and barbecues, and doing a little bit of everything from a facility if we had a space to be able to do so, that stuff. I just think it's a great idea, really.
Do any of the other board members have a question for our coaches or Kevin? If we do, and if not, we can move on and get a general overview of the project from Mr. Hur. Neil, would you like to give a general, just a general quick overview of what you've done, and what you've put together, just sort of by notes, and maybe a little bit about what your thoughts were and your intentions and all that?
Basically, and I told Dan about this, Ashley and I, the adults, artists, people that are tight, we've been socking away because we've been going with different church, we don't have to speak out things like that. Well, it's going to grow some, and we have a deserved amount, and we thought, well, what could impact positively in the year? And overall, we cover the most, you know, what would happen in a broader script, and we live with a certain factor like that, and just said, basketball, even foms, dance, cheerleaders, you've got so many people that are dying for practice, you've got all of it, with elder needs, and, you know, younger being your honey, getting home and block everything, and if you move your softball, baseball to a proper ring, they can work out, has some convenience. We thought it'd have a pretty big impact on the majority of what would be student body here and positive, and any group to not get hurt, the several programs that were used and didn't have it, in lieu of a baseball program, you know, but we thought a large percentage of the student body can be a positive, positive outcome for everybody. So I actually mentioned it there, we thought, well, let's see how this plan, and I thought, well, maybe I bring something specific to you guys, because you're saying, hey, I want to do this, and it's not about us, but the people have stepped up, because I thought, well, let's get this, let's see if we can get figured out, but everything else is kind of laid out for us. I guess if it is possible, and here are a lot of questions to answer. Of course, we started in county, we don't have anybody here offering for site ground, concrete, stuff, simply because it doesn't make a lot of sense to build it that far away, that, you know, higher goods offer basically free, they work good at that, and I guess, like, for free trucking, the site exploration, you know, he was a fuel cost, concrete, they give him about a dollar a square, but ready, when you sit there, God, about eight hundred, like, facilities were kind of long, did you get some considerable expense, anything about water, and why you guys were screwing right in there, it makes sense to put a man's fault in that corner here in the factory. Still, that's why they're not here, but I guess if we threw it, Mike's on this call from Burns Building, but I don't like him, and he's done quite a bit of work, and actually convinced the metal supplier to get him to send below their cost. So I don't see any way of beating that. I think Ryan, Ryan, did you have a quote from Menard, which is probably about to be hired when we came out there?
Yeah, yes, that's accurate.
Excuse me?
Yes, that's accurate, yes.
Okay, and then I got ahold of the, that was the life metal here on Camden, because that's in Downey, explained what the goal was and everything, you know, so a building far smaller, they were a little 2,000 higher than what Mike did. I told Mike I didn't shop in front of him, because, you know, they do work with Carter, they work with them, and Mike, you can answer those, but you've worked with them for years.
Yeah.
So you get freed, right? And so we're going to get freed, right? And also, you've offered to install now, we lived at one overhead door, and we discussed a little bit, and I could go further, but it probably has to go straight up the wall, if it's going to make sense. They installed, they have their own door people, Mike is a little more turned to you than any other supplier now, they're booked out as far as contractors, but again, Ryan looked at him, give the number for a contractor, as far as I could cook, building up, if you get it done, Mike says, come out and put in the door and get it sat. I don't know, he's really done a lot of good, you mentioned your architect, go ahead and get on the book, whatever you need as far as permits and things, and things, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, he's really stepped up, wouldn't be helped by anybody else, must do, kind of just played it off, and I couldn't be more appreciative of Mike for that. And I happened to be afraid of this, I put up a building, and I use Burns, and I, you know, I've, they have a lot of people, and they did incredible work, are going to be happy with the pleasure of what I did with it. And then, Mike, do you have anything to add? I mean, we discussed several items, do you have anything to add on the thing as far as supply materials and architect?
Yeah, I would just say that when you come to me, in our position, I thought the best thing we could do is offer, so as far as figuring the building, the materials, designing, helping design the structure, in a way, and we kind of used our design to do that, so I figured all those materials, as we were going to build this building for you, and then shop them to our suppliers, where we're not, all these are direct with our suppliers, so you're getting some of the items below what we normally get, and like all the steel from Ramco, for instance, I think they had a 10% discount that they offered you guys, you know, I explained the situation to them. So I tried to separate all the materials, so you could, you know, you could shop them, and I don't really care if, you know, if you're able to hang a little price on something, that's fine with us. And then our architect, as Neil mentioned, agreed to do this pro bono, which is a pretty big savings, because usually for a school like this, you probably look into a $3,000 bill for architectural services, you get to state. So he's doing that pro bono, with the exception of the fees and blueprints and any hard stuff he needs, but his services will be free to you guys.
Mike, would you be considered the construction manager, or would company be considered the construction manager of this project?
Not really, the way I did it, it's more of an estimator and a figure, so I, you know, we, although we could help with some of the labor, we're really not charging them, so I wouldn't consider our position that way, really. I mean, I suppose we could probably work something out, but we would, I would help the architect design the building so it was done right, and it would be up to, I would say, up to you guys somewhere to make sure it's built the way it's done the plans.
Steve, I have any questions for Mike if this is done? Did Mike get a chance to look at the materials for the new two?
Yeah, we spent that on, you guys should have.
Did we get a number of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mike separated that out on the pre-emails last week, Mike, we did that.
Yeah, I have it here, if you want me to, real quick. The shed price for the lumber portion and the other things, other than steel, was, the total with steel was 24.98 additional, 24.98, 44. And these may fluctuate a little bit, I just price these, our lumber changes monthly, so they may change a little bit with the market, and the way things are going, might be a little bit cheaper, but that's about where we were at that time when I figured it.
Mike, what's the gauge? I mean, give me a concept, a little bit of it, I mean, I dealt a little bit in pole barns over the years.
It's a 28 gauge, 80,000 PSI strength, it does come with a lifetime warranty that I have, you know, it's limited, so there's a few things on there, but it's, we've used a lot of different steel, we're very happy with Ramco.
As far as the building, the way you figured it, inside walls, fully insulated, there's a roof, I assume, I think the project was showing 16 foot, maybe to the square, so we'd have a ceiling in there at 16 foot, insulated on top of that, because if we're going to put heating in, I would think, and then also on the inside, we'd have inside walls of some sort to, number one, hold the insulation up, but two, for to keep the balls from hitting the tin and making all kinds of dings and stuff, is that the way the project is designed at this point?
Well, I think that can be added, but I don't think we did any interior. I did put, the only insulation we have, is some kind of station barrier underneath the roof steel. Am I right on that, or you didn't?
Mike, here, correct, I can help you out a little bit, is if you put inside wall, for now, unless you're even there, like it's on here at the store, we didn't put the ceiling, and we'll get to that with Steve in a moment, and then give me a question, if you share that, everything, what they do on everything, was being used, I sent that in March to Ryan, and then Ryan pointed out that you didn't send it on, so all that information was sent in March, everything, I mean, breaking down to the nails, but no, interior, and we can move on to that, with Steve.
That's fine.
Steve.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Steve, I think I sent that to you and Dan, to where the concern with damage and things like that, of course, most of it's going to be, like they do, that we talked about closed cell, drop it at 18 feet, and closed cell on the roof, and then open cell in between, is what you gave me, am I reading correct?
We figured on closed cell on the bottom eight feet, and then open cell all the rest of the way up, I figured on open cell on the roof deck, to do.
Okay.
Is the way I'd figured it, maybe there was a misunderstanding there, I don't know.
Oh, I mean, that's fine, I just wasn't sure, I just knew closed cell, we would have some concern about things, you can't detect that.
Right.
And then the lean through, we had, I think, open cell, if you wanted to lift the metal up, and the lean through, like locker room, I guess, makes sense, and we didn't talk about insulating in third wall, that makes some difference. Steve, I guess, maybe you can explain a little more about the closed cell, and why it's basically vaulted, and why we want that in the first day to be from the floor up?
Yeah, the closed cell, the density is just a lot higher than what it would be in the open cell, so their damage from balls and stuff like that would be minimized, I'm not saying that would make small dents, the open cell does a lot better for sound, as far as like a lot of noise in there would really start to echo if you was to do the whole building with closed cell. So I highly recommend at least do an open cell with the roof deck, just because of the sound characteristics of it, and also, if you was to ever get a roof leak, you can find the roof leak a lot easier with open cell than you can with closed cell, so we kind of push the open cell from that aspect. The closed cell could be ran all the way up the walls, it would be a little more expensive to do that, if you, I mean, if you're worried about damage all the way up to the roof.
One thing I would, you got to say, one thing I would add to that, if you are going to do that, I would recommend putting a house wrap, we typically use product called Typar, little bit of holder, so you do not spray that foam directly against the metal, which would allow you to change a piece of metal if you had one dented, and there's a lot of problems with doing that, so that, we recommend that, to do that, and I don't think I figured house wrap, it's not a huge deal, but I would put that on there, because we're going to do it.
I think there's some differing opinions on that, but I think there's nothing wrong with doing that, for sure. And like you said, it does allow then for.
Steve, once, or Mike, it doesn't matter, we're basically putting bubble on the roof for a condensation, that R factor is basically nothing, right? I mean, if we're going to heat that place, we really need to have a better insulation than just that, right?
Yeah, I think he was talking about adding that underneath the roof deck, so whether you need that insulation, I put on there, maybe there's something else that would work better to spray that against, I'm not sure exactly.
Well, that's where I guess I looked at, you know, the project is, you know, the talking point, and I guess my talking point is this, that, so we put up a 80 by 104, whatever it was, and we've got six inch insulation around it, right, with inside walls, the roof at the square at 18, it's got the R factor of about 30, because we heat that with actually two infrared tube heaters that are actually 225,000, so it doesn't take a lot, because the way we insulated it, and if we're going to use this throughout the winter and stuff, you know, part of the cost, putting up a building is one thing, but the maintenance, what it's going to take to keep them kids comfortable, things like that, you know, also, the opinion is, do we put heat in the cement, you know, because you're out there on, but, I mean, what's your guys' opinion on when it comes to things like that? Just not the asphalt, the asphalt is a whole nother question in my book, to be honest about it, as far as putting a building on it, I know it's more cost, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure it's right for the, you know, for the right reasons, not just a building to maybe have a little bit of practice, because it's a nice day out at 60 degrees, and we can get in there, otherwise, it's just cold as you can't do anything. So what's your, you know, to take it down to that point?
You want me to take that one, or?
Well, basically, Mike, when I said we will not be eating a garden tree floor, but we put it on asphalt, it's not possible. Two, Steve, I guess, you have the winged idea of the R factor, because foam is just really high, there's no real set R factor to both insulation and floor, I mean.
What you're dealing with, spray foam insulation just gives you an air seal, like you won't get with any other insulation, so performance-wise, the spray foam is going way outperform any other insulation that you could put in the building, as far as, even if you was to put a ceiling in it and everything else, we will outperform with what we've got put in there, will outperform what you're going to get to do with fiberglass or say, or any other insulation out there.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, like I say, I just want to make sure everything is, you know, as we go forward, the thing then comes, if we don't have a ceiling in there, we're just going up to, you know, the A frames of it, then we're going to make sure, as we put in, and I don't think we put into it either, we're going to need some, like, industrial fans to move the heat back down, or move things around, I mean, it's not like a normal pole barn out there that I do, or I got, or anything like that, I mean, this is public, and there's certain ventilation things I know we've got to have, it's not to be, I don't want to sound negative, okay, what I'm just trying to do is, where's that total cost for a turnkey thing that's going to build the right building, and just not slap up a pole barn and then find out, you know, oh, hey, we found another 50, 60,000.
I've been over a month, and to get this figured out, I did, and it's not a warehouse, it's going to be full of people, brief, people that are busy, and you're not going to be paying them that much heat up, but I mean, it's not slapped together, I mean, I've never seen this boss, but I've got well into a month, probably these people, and I've got that much, and you're visiting with them, that's what they do.
Could we get some information? Could we get some information on the heating and cooling system that Shane proposed to put in?
Uh, while we were talking about putting their, uh, putting their losing in not necessarily to keep anybody cool or anything, simply pay your son a few degrees more, they can get down. So they work, uh, with the insulation, everything, but I know they have two room to use or something, that's, it's basically. Uh, what about the, the heating, uh, additional, uh, traditional, more, per traditional furnace, uh, in the, the 100, 120,000 BTB furnace?
That's a Bosch system or your?
Yeah, it's a Bosch system, right, so a lot of Bosch, yeah. Price of Bosch, Bosch, people with preference of Bosch, like, I can't buy the furnace for what they, for what.
So the, the 8500 I see is, is the union and cooling, uh, materials and.
Put the snares off and you put them into our houses and stuff like that, all, all, uh, work for us, whatever, professional, you know, stuff, flexible. Always gonna be able to leave the frame for a couple of times, you know, it'll keep that soft, great.
I don't think I have it in. I don't, we don't have a lighting.
That's in there, it was in the spreadsheet, all spreadsheet.
It, it was made more like.
It was, it was, I think it was one of that.
Well, you show it for me.
I bring out the green one, but everybody got it.
Or no, many of them, the companies sent it off, but in March I said, and it was sent off. And I just knew you guys could not see all of that, and I'm also, I didn't think I'd have to follow up.
So basically, for anyone listening, the, the HVAC system is from Bosch, uh, it's about a $14,000 system. We're getting for 8500 and the installation is at nerve cost by, uh, Mr. Jack. Does anybody have any questions on that, heating cooling system?
More than that, we located that and it's linked. But you can, you can put it wherever you want, it has to be inside the, right? But we put it in for small life, but, and then people are not actually what's work off, up load, down load, but we just have the inside some. We, I mean, we have plants upstairs, one return and one in, all the supplies, yeah.
That's what I learned about when I was looking into, diagram or outside.
What did we not find?
Is it, is this system, we're gonna have to move the air entire, you don't think we need fans, we need fans? And that'll be inside.
Yeah, that's the room there. 1033, I think, I think, we're calling our calls, uh, I don't know, 1033, keep all those, all the plastic first, relax. I'm wondering, also, are we gonna pay for the, is it necessary, necessary, or something?
On the, uh, back to the, the material for the outside, Mike, um, I think I had asked Neil about this, but they, the, the colors of the, this color scheme of the outside of the building would be the black and gold similar to our other concession stands and stuff like that.
Well, if you're tan, gold, a gold and not a tan, that could be, I don't think they offer that gold. That's gonna be hard to find, I don't know if you can see this, these are the colors, so this, you see the, the tannish color, can you guys see that?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see.
Yeah, it's not really a gold, uh, it's more of a tan, they, I mean, there's very few steel suppliers that have gold anymore, but possibly we can find it. It's, uh, it's just not a common color now, so.
Uh, I know a couple of, of the board members had questions about the door size, and if anybody wanna talk about why the size of the door could have, uh, spec, is, is what we need or, or why we went that way?
I, I think originally we just, again, we're trying to do kind of a minimal size, um, that we could do, uh, getting much money anywhere else to do it. So, uh, we're certainly, that door size is, is not indicative of, of needing it for baseball or softball. Um, so that, that certainly would be something that could be changed.
With the first, just trying to teach you that, but like, would you been, uh, like a, a gager or a rating of the convenient mower in? So we figured, uh, uh, that you might can, and, you know, Mike and I discussed, that if it goes straight up the wall, it's gotta be matched where, you know, you repeated, it's gonna be that. Uh, like I said, that, that'd be fully up to you guys, it's just, uh, the question of, you know, what the thought process is. Cause the other thing, you got, Ryan, when you picture two or three, it's five or over 51, if you agree that, I mean, it's not a big, uh, whole mark percentage, but there'd be where you fit something in there. And that's where you, I just thought, well, look at that door size, cause doors can be very costly. Mike, I, I mean, this is the thing, the door I have in my shop was probably as much as the material.
Yeah.
I think it's also, but I, that can be discussed with, I mean, I, I do, we just pictured what would fit, even in some contact, compact tractors would fit, but, I mean, pretty important, but, but, but.
Personally, personally, I, I think, uh, thing is correct, I mean, an eight by 10, what, whatever he's got figured in there, I think is fine. We, you know, we got to, we still have the garage there next to the baseball field that we basically keep, uh, all, all of our mowing equipment and turf machine in. And, you know, I think, I think that door would be fine, uh, it gives us the ability to get in there with something that's a little bit oversized. If we gotta do something to, you know, hang, hang nets or, or do something else, I, but I think, I think, yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine the way it is. Looked good to me anyway, don't you think, Ryan?
Yes, it's plenty big to get nets in and out and, you know, if you wanted to, at some point, you turn it back to where you had tractors in there, they'll, they'll go in that size of door, smaller tractors that we have.
Yeah, that's what I think too, too.
Just as long as we can, Mike, this is for you, just information as long as it go off the ball, um, and, you know, we have sort of a circle.
Yeah, the, well, the problem is it's too high to go full vertical lift now without running in the attic, which you could do. Um, but ideally, and after listening, you guys kind of catch him back on something you said. I think you guys would be better off putting the ceiling in this, uh, building so you could insulate it a little better, that way you wouldn't be heating the attic. Uh, I think you're making mistakes, you know, at some point down the line. Uh, um, I think I would like him and, uh, for this, or I think you'd have a lot better R value in with, uh, a different type insulation there. And, and also if you're, if, as far as the state's concerned, for a occupied building of this type, when you're talking about putting this heating system, if it's gonna be above 55 degrees, uh, then you'll have to meet some energy code things, and you're not gonna get it with R19 in the ceiling, that won't do it. You'll have to be in the 30s, so, uh, it's something for you to consider, uh, the metal price to give you is pretty cheap. So I think you could do that pretty individual.
Okay, uh, yeah, we got, uh, Keith Gibson. And he's, um, off, off the face. Off the face, and he, he has put together the information for the electrical materials and lighting.
Uh, he, he can, he can give us an overview of the, uh, how good of a deal you're giving us with that, that would be appreciated. Okay, so, right now, we've got it priced off of the bill material that Steve's given us, I mean, uh, so there are major things that'll change, um, from this, so, you know, I do, let's get into it, I made his materials exactly correct. Right now, the original material came out to 6,400, um, 59 dollars. Um, and that included two different lighting options, which one of those options was 2,063, the other was 2940. So we would take one of those numbers out. I've re-looked at this and ran some different layouts over the last few days, and we can actually get those numbers down, um, to one option of 2,100 bucks. Um, for, for discount, the other one at 2,700 dollars, and we can take another 10, uh, 10% out of that number there. So overall, we could get this project down, um, on the inside with the bill material that I have, um, currently, right around 3,500 to 4,000 dollars, depending on which option you get.
Okay, that's for lighting and all, all electrical?
That's for lighting, that's for lighting, um, that's for all of your light fixtures, a panel, and then the conduit, the electrical supplies that he supplied us with the listing.
Uh, one other question that I'd seen, uh, how, where, where would the service come from for out there to come off the existing concession stand?
Is that figured in the price also, Keith?
I would have to ask Neil that question if that's included in the bill material he's given, because I don't see any underground conduit or underground wire that he was running from a concession stand over to the panel.
And so that's something we would have to look at.
So Neil, was that something you were adding into this, or?
Uh, we, we're a new, new customer and, uh, Mr. Strick said he would check with them about getting power. In order to work on, on, if it was, I can get ahold of those folks and make some sense of it. And then that comes from a transformer, or? That's what we're gonna send, uh, those, those, over here, okay, run it off. Those lights that you're gonna install, are those specifically for athletic facilities where they're?
That's not what was requested, um, when we quoted this, it was, you know, looking at a high bay option or with eight foot strip lighting.
Will they have some kind of grills or protective coverings on so they?
So they, they will have a, you know, a metal grill, if we go with the high bay lighting, they will have a metal grill that goes over where the, uh, where the light output comes from, but that was a question I had asked as well, and I was told that the lights would be installed in a way that either with the, uh, nets, no balls should get to the lights, so it wasn't a requirement that I was asked to supply.
Keith, with your expertise on going back to the, the power source, um, being a building like we're doing, running with, uh, power and everything, uh, from coming, coming from a, another panel from another building over to there, or versus should it have its own, um, hookup disconnect, um, you know, straight power source, so to speak, what's your opinion?
I guess it would come down to, and I would have to come out and take a look, or, you know, we'd have to have a contractor come out and see how much power you have, are you pulling off of? Um, obviously, if we have a new run, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about what our power concerns are, um, versus, you know, how much power you have off of what we're coming off of. So it would just dictate from where we're pulling from.
Keith, wouldn't use a depth probably, the smartest thing is, contract split power in a building, probably, and it may be over to be able to do a new service, coming.